Get started on it, and this is just gonna be the beginning part of the public hearing. What the presentation is going to show is a little bit of the history of where we started. What we're looking at, how we got to the process and methodology that we're gonna be using for dredging. And then kind of what the next steps are. This will be the initial portion of the public hearing on construction drawings, specifications and cost estimates. For the Lake Lemon Sediment Management Project. That line, again, will do purpose, will do history of the sediment problem, the project evolution, our methods, implementation. And then the financing with the final part of the discussion. So the project purpose, this was when we really came up the initial project to try to state what we were hoping to accomplish. And the project purpose was to utilize science-based management. To reduce, remove and consolidate sediment loading within Lake Lemon and the tributaries. Part of that included enhancing wetland functionality. Which means increasing the ability of the wetlands to capture sediment and store it there. And increase sediment accretion, which is actually the buildup of the sediment in a specific location rather than everywhere. Hopefully, we plan to reduce impacts and rates of sedimentation within the lake and increase efficiency and longevity of our in-house operation. A little bit of the history of sedimentation in Lake Lemon. Lake Lemon was built in about nineteen fifty-five, essentially when it was online and fully functioning. When they built the lake and when they build other man-made lakes, reservoirs, there is an inherent life expectancy. Of the lake. So they started doing sediment testing per- pretty early on. And the reason there is a life expectancy is because when you dam a creek that was previously land. And not water, Mother Nature wants to return it back to where it was. Some of the northern natural lakes will be around for, you know, thousands of years because they were formed by glaciers. But when you dig a creek, there's an inherent sediment issue to try to return that to a stable environment, which is the creek. The first record that we have of a sedimentation study is from nineteen seventy-four. Called Sedimentation Lake Lemon Monroe County, Indiana. And at this time, they estimated the sedimentation rate just over forty thousand cubic yards per year. In that report, they estimated that the nominal life estimate for the east end is eighty years. What they classified as the east end and where they did some of their sampling. In this projection is what they call RL eight. So this is the line where they're basing the east end off, was essentially Point Idolon, straight down to Solomon Harbor. So they said that there there'd be about an estimated life expectancy of eighty years. Here we are sixty-five years into the lake. And we're starting to see, you know, almost how accurate they were. The rate seems to be a little bit quicker because we do know this line right here, almost. It's a little bit west of, but denotes where the vegetation line is now. So this is a digitized version of the, oh, I want one more. Here's the nineteen seventy-four data, it's a digitized version of the bathymetry or the lake depth. What we see here on the eastern end around the edges, this white is zero to five foot. Then as you get darker, you have deeper and greater depths. So we kind of see back from here, even in nineteen seventy-four, that east of Point Idolon and that main bay. Was less than five feet of water, the land in this area was not quite there, however, we didn't have really good aerial maps to project this on at the time. So next we'll go from nineteen seventy-four to our second bathymetric study that was done. And that's in two thousand and four. And again, we'll look at this eastern edge here. And kind of see where the water depth is decreasing. And that can be associated with a delta formation and moving out. I'll jump back and forth between the two again. So here's nineteen seventy-four. You can kind of see where there is some areas greater than five foot of depth of water. By two thousand and four, there's nothing greater than five foot depth in this area. Next we have the twenty fourteen. And on this bathymetric study, there's not a whole lot of change to the north, but we start to see is this point of land. Which we can see the lotus there, uh, starting to bloom now, actually treated on Monday. But you start to see where the sediment is forming additional delta space right where Bean Blossom Creek enters into the lake. And so again, from two thousand and four to fourteen, we really noticed this area right here popping up pretty quick. After two thousand and fourteen, our last bathymetric study was in twenty nineteen. And twenty nineteen, you can see again, the greater development. Of the spit of land forming than the decrease in depth in that eastern bay. So twenty fourteen to twenty nineteen, that delta is really continuing to move out. And you can also start to see where the original creek channels are beginning to fill in at the deepest points. And the sediment that makes it into the lake that's real fine will generally find its way to the deepest point. So as I flip back through the slides, I want you to take a look from nineteen seventy-four at the original creek channel. The reduction in depth as they move forward into history. So you can kind of see that eastern to westward sediment migration that's occurring. Now, I'm gonna take a sip of water. Now, while those visuals are are pretty good at showing the actual depths relative to the area. Next, we're gonna focus on the eastern edge and some aerial photography that we have. I mean, to really drive home the the issue that's going on. So here we have two historical photos, one from nineteen sixty-three, one from nineteen ninety-eight. And what we really noticed here is there did not seem to be an entire, a whole lot of change as far as land formation. You know, you can't see what's going on under the water here. But if we take Little Africa as a reference point as we move through these aerial photos. What we do notice is on this northern edge, we start to see a little bit of land formation. And then just north of Chitwood. We started to see some land formation forming here, and this is really the first time there was any land north of Little Africa. But not a whole lot of change between nineteen sixty-three and nineteen ninety-eight. As we move forward, we really start noticing big changes and there's quite a bit of correlation with increased rain events in the winter time. Not as much icing and freezing going on, but from nineteen ninety-eight to almost, uh, just under a decade later, later. Two thousand and seven, and we'll jump back between the two again. Hardly anything above Little Africa. Nine years later, we start to have what I've referred to as the wishbone forming, um, just north of Little Africa. So we see new land here. And also land starting to form here. This must be a fall picture because there is lotus in bloom. But again, nineteen ninety-eight, hardly anything, one decade later, we see massive changes with the sediment coming in. As we move to the twenty fourteen aerials, let's still keep focused kind of in this Little Africa area for reference. Or I guess this will be a twenty fifteen aerial, the bathymetric was in twenty fourteen. What we start to notice is the full formation of that kind of wishbone. Um, island or landmass, and then we also start to see the formation of trees and a spit of land forming off the tip of Little Africa. So between two thousand and seven, there was really nothing there, just a little bit of lotus. Twenty fifteen had the land formation. And the full wishbone formation. And then twenty nineteen, this was in February twenty nineteen after we had those crazy storms. We got some aerial photography taken from a pilot that we hired. And you can really see. The land formation coming off the wishbone and that Little Africa area. And then also to the northern part, you can see some land formation just east of Idolon. And you can actually see that out there with your naked eye now, you're starting to see some cattails. Willows and other types of transitional species forming. So the rate really in the past decade has increased tremendously. And I think we can remember in two thousand and eight, we had the hundred-year flood. Twenty eighteen, we had a big year flood. Twenty nineteen in February, again, we had a flood that inundated. Aqua Isle, Dorothy Lane and all these type of areas. So the frequency and the intensity of these rain events during the winter time. Are really starting to happen more frequently. And what that really does provides a big issue for the sedimentation rate. Because instead of the land being fully saturated with water and frozen and locked up for a three to four month period of a time. What you actually have happening is the freeze thaw process. Really breaks up this land in the winter time, then when we get these big torrential downpours, it washes all that sediment off, that's some freshly de-stained laws. And this is not looking like it's going to decrease anytime soon. But what's not gonna decrease is the trend that we are seeing in climate and the sedimentation. This is from a two thousand and eighteen study entitled Aquatic Ecosystems and the Shifting Indiana Climate. This is from Purdue University. And actually on our Facebook page, I have been linking to some recent. Discussions that were going on from Purdue, some live feeds, in case anybody's interested in following the science that's going on. But with what they're seeing and trending and the predictions. Fall into a couple of different categories, and these all have impacts on lakes. Especially reservoirs that have inherent sedimentation issues. One is they're estimating that by mid-century, air temperatures will rise by five to six degrees, and they're saying about twenty fifty for mid-century. Water temperatures and streams, rivers and lakes will increase and duration, extent of ice cover will decline. I think we've noticed that here on the lake, I believe the last time I went ice fishing was in two thousand and fourteen on Lake Lemon. And last year, we had no more than one inch of ice and probably about a third of the lake, and we never even fully locked up. Last year. Now this has impacts on both vegetation control and sedimentation. As far as vegetation control, one of the reasons that we would historically do drawdowns. Is to try to get a vegetation kill. If you have a long-term deep freeze, it'll kill off the root structures on vegetation. Killing the plants, and you won't have to spray them the next year. However, without the long duration freezes anymore, that that's not really. Feasible to use as a management method. Next, I have the chi- change, changes in timing, intensity and amount of Indiana's precipitation. And the effects that'll have.
Pause for a dramatic effect. We might have lost him, he was having some issues with.
Yeah, we, I don't have him, his.
Yeah.
Speech anymore, I've got the screen, how about you all?
I, I.
I don't see him.
I don't see him, I don't hear him.
Should, should one of us text him, or does he know what's going on?
Let me.
Yeah.
Can you do that, Alex?
Yeah, I'll get it.
Well, it looks like he's coming back.
You guys got me again?
Yeah.
Where did, where did you lose me at? And I'll go back.
Climate predictions, climate predictions you had just started.
The second bullet point on that.
Precipitation changes.
All right, let me jump back and I'll share the screen again. It's a lot for this, uh, laptop to handle. All right. Is it showing on the screen?
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
Is our, is our audience, are public able to see, Alex?
Uh, they will soon.
Okay, let us know.
All right. We good to go, Alex?
I mean, it'll catch up to you.
All right.
It's on there now.
So we'll jump to the, the second bullet point, which is chaming, changes in timing, intensity and amount of precipitation. And what we're seeing is an increase in frequency of high-intensity precipitation events. So the climate is becoming wetter in general, but we're also having more intense rains. On a greater frequency, which we've been seeing in these kind of, you know, January, February, March rains that we've had, where this come down incredibly intense. And just massive amounts of sediment coming into the lake. Now, what you're gonna have, one of the biggest impacts that you're gonna have on these is wetland flooding. And I believe we have been seeing that in some of the eastern portions along Aqua Isle. And the residences there, and the reason that this says is wetlands store water, they're there to buffer water. They, they absorb water and dry seasons, they leach water into the lake and surrounding areas. Other times they store it, so they slow down the, the flow. And with what we have, the spillway, while we generally get back to our normal pool elevations for water level relatively quick. During these high-intensity rains, we will see the water level rise and then come back down. There's not really much we can control about that, there has been questions in the past about utilizing the sluice gate. The forty-inch pipe really isn't gonna do anything over that hundred yards spillway once we're above normal pool. So something to look at is increased frequency of intense precipitation of events. And the associated floodings and wetlands and lowlands that's associated with, uh. Next, our Indiana stream flows are expected to become more variable. And again, this kind of goes with the changing in frequency and intensity of precipitation events. If you have short-term, high-intensity stream or rain events, you're gonna have really flashy strains, they're gonna rise real quick. Uh, which is when they have the most erosive force to eat at the banks, and then they're also gonna come down real quick. So while they're short-lived, the streams become more flashy instead of a steady flow. Finally, um, the increase of risk of human-derived nutrients entering Indiana waterways. And why they utilize nutrients for that, um, that can also be used as a. The qualifier for sedimentation. Um, one of the biggest transitional pathways and migratory pathways for nutrients is to actually absorb to. Um, the dirt particles and then actually travel downstream with that. So with the intense precipitation, we'll have increased nutrients, if you do have a lot of agriculture and farmland in the watershed. Those nutrients do increase risk for algae blooms, increase vegetation growth. By providing the limiting nutrients to that, that also can spell out more, more sedimentation during these high-intensity events. So the, the need is there, the sediment problem is, um, it's not, not being reduced, the amount of loading that we're seeing. So we really had to look into changing how we are dealing with this so we can stay ahead of this. And one thing to remember too is these life expectancies for reservoirs, that's assuming no input in management projects or practices. So the more management and the higher efficiency that we can have. You know, the longer we can push back the life expectancy and the usability of the reservoir. So the project evolution. We'll jump into, and this is kind of just how we got to, to where we are and what we're going to do. First of all, Lake Lemon Conservancy District was formed for two purposes. There's five potential purposes for the formation of conservancy districts. Including fire districts, water reservoirs, flood control, recreation. And irrigation, I believe is the fifth one. Now, we were formed for water quality and recreational use of the lake. So water quality refers to it being used as a potential backup water supply if the need were to arise. And that comes into our vegetation control, nutrient monitoring, algae monitoring. Really kind of, you know, checking to see what quality the lake is in. And then the recreational use of the lake, and this is to maintain it for swimming, boating and fishing are the three recreational standards. That are utilized. I'm just gonna interject in here too, on, on the flooding issue is flood control lakes. Do not have spillways. Flood control lakes have sluice gates, emergency spillways if waters get extremely high. But flood control lakes are designed to stop flooding downstream of lakes. And this is why Lake Monroe can have a potentially eighteen-foot rise in their pool elevation levels before going over the emergency spillway. If you wanna prevent flooding upstream, you don't put a dam in the stream. Um, I mean, that just inherently increases the risk of flooding because you're capturing water. Flood can, flood control is, works downstream and it's not an upstream management practice. First, we had in twenty seventeen, um, we're starting to assess what the potential actions were. This graphic is from a KCI Sediment Management Alternatives, uh, report that was done. And really what we looked at was four different alternatives. One was no action and why that is best for water quality because it allows the vegetation growth. It's not very good for recreation or utilization of the lake. Alternative two is dredging removal, essentially just straight dredging of the eastern bay. Alternative three was in-place management, which we looked at, and that would be. Essentially storing the sediment in lake, creating islands, creating storage within the lake. And the number four is alternative hybrid removal and management approach. What we ultimately decided was to look at these hybrid removal and management. With the goal being, we remove sediment. We decrease the amount of sediment that's entering the lake. And we increase the amount of storage of sediment in the existing wetlands and delta. From KCI, this was a kind of off, off a hip projection of what. The delta could potentially look like in twenty-four, assuming no maintenance activities were implemented. And we just continued with the access dredging that we were doing. Now on this, while it was kind of off the cusp, we actually are seeing in these delta areas, the land formation that has happened. And then we're starting to see lotus out in these areas here. I mean, so assuming nothing happens, this delta is gonna continue to migrate westward. After the KCI study, what we did was we started to look into getting with a contracting agency. To figure out what our designs and potential management practices would be. This led us into the phase when we worked with Shrewsbury and actually came up with our sediment mitigation concept design plan. And I'm really only gonna utilize one slide to kind of summarize this. This is essentially an all-a-cart menu of the options that we had for management. This included the potential creation of a berm or forbays, we call it, for capture of sediment. Opening of old creek flow pathways and then also dredging. Now, while we did find out, and we'll get into the study a little bit, that. The forbay capture method will not work due to both the amount of sediment coming in. And the very small particle size of the sediments coming in. The rest of it, we are keeping one, opening up these northern axis channels, we're currently dredging in Dorothy Lane. And then we'll continue over the future in-house to, to open up these channels here. And really what that would do is allow the flow of high sediment laden water. To spread out through the whole delta area instead of just tail piping into Lake Lemon. So this would actually increase the rate of capture in the area that's already existing and reduce the amount that's making it to the lake proper. These zones one through five were the dredging zones that we came up with. If you remember back on the maps a while ago, there was kind of like that spit of land forming here. Which really kind of coincides with that zone one. The plan is, and has not changed from before, is to begin on the southern boundary. And these zone ones to where it gets less than five foot, we'll be treating or dredging all the way to the lotus maintenance line. And we will continue northward until we're limited by either funds. Or storage capacity for our, the sediment disposal sites. Christopher Burke, the Sediment Transport Project, this was done last year. And really the biggest driving factor of this was we had to see how much sediment could possibly be stored in this forbay. We wanted to look at the efficiency of capture and storage. And then just really see the feasibility of the different management practices. What the sediment transport study essentially told us is that given the fine nature of the sediment, it's not feasible to remove a high percentage of incoming sediment. When you're restricted to the forbay of the size that was proposed. And actually, in our past studies, I believe maybe in the district plan and some of our earlier studies. They said, uh, if you were to have a forbay for capture, it would almost have to be the size of the eastern bay. East of Reed Point, which is essentially what's happening right now with Mother Nature, if we don't do anything. So dredging should focus on areas needed for lake access or in lake areas that become too shallow for standard recreation. And this is why we're focusing in that eastern bay. Where the entire freeholder population and the public will benefit from the dredging practices that are going on. For our initial project. So we wanna bring that eastern bay between Reed Point and Point Idolon up to a minimum of five feet depth. To the vegetation maintenance line. And finally, the accumulation silt within the body of the lake appears to be unavoidable and should be addressed on an as-needed basis. And again, it goes back to the storm frequencies and intensities are increasing. The sediment, there's not really reduction coming in the lake, we can. Capture more and store it in the delta by opening the flow path, but the silt is going to continue to come. And that's just the, the nature of the beast when you're dealing with reservoirs. This was. A couple of graphics from that sediment report. Well, right off the top of the hand, they don't mean too much. These lines are the flow rates and sediment delivery rates. Based on the bathymetric and studies that we have done in the past. And what we see, essentially the, the area under the line can be equated to the volume of sediment coming in. In a given, given timeframe. So this red line is nineteen seventy-four to two thousand and four, we have two thousand and four to fourteen, and then twenty fourteen to twenty nineteen. This is showing the amount of sediment that came in on an acre-feet per year. Which an acre foot is one acre, one foot deep, it's that, that amount of sediment, and I believe it's a. Little over a thousand cubic yards. But what we see is that. This area underneath the lines every year is continuing to increase, which is showing that the volume of sediment. As we move forward in time, coming in in a given year is continuing to increase as well. Also, what we see on this bottom part, again, it's acre feet, that's how they do it. I have calculated the yardage on the eastern side here. We see our average annual cubic yardage per year coming in as a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Over the history, essentially of the lakes since nineteen seventy-four. The majority of that is likely in the past two decades when we have really noticed a big increase. Between two thousand and four to fourteen and then fourteen to nineteen. We are seeing a relatively steady increase of sediment coming into the lake. And again, this is really, I believe, associated with the precipitation patterns and climate changes that we are seeing going on. So there's, there's more sediment coming to the lake as we forward, and this really drives the factor that we need to look at our methodology. For, for treating this. So that kind of brings us to where we were, got to the method of what we wanna do. We realized opening the channels, we can do in-house to spread out the flow of sediment-laden water in the delta. And then we will be doing sediment dredging utilizing hydraulic dredging. Last fall and into the winter, we did purchase a piece of property on South Shore Drive, just south of Little Africa for a hundred and two thousand dollars. The entire lot is about fourteen acres, and then there's about seven acres of usable disposal site. And that's of these areas that are the open field and not wooded. This western portion does actually have a substantial amount of wetlands from the wetland study that we had. However, that's, that's a good thing, if we, if we do more projects in the future, we need mitigation. What we can actually do is lock this up into a wetland reserve. As mitigation, say, hey, we will never impact those, we'll let it form as a wetland, and they will actually keep that for mitigation. So this is the South Shore Drive parcel, and then that was really kind of our first, um, you know. Bird in hand as far as where we can utilize locations for disposal site. Some of the biggest issues that we faced is we can, there's methods to take out immense amount of sedimentation. But the storage is the issue. We do have two other disposal sites that we use for mechanical dredging, we'll continue to utilize those. Then we're just, we're in a hilly kind of ravine and there's lots of wetlands and, and not much farm fields. So this was a, a pretty big win as far as having a spot that we could pretty much have guaranteed use of. So to the methodology, what we've realized is that we really just need to focus on the mass. Movement and removal of sediment and then increasing the functionality of the delta. So we will be contracting hydraulic dredging for the eastern bay on that zone map, zone one through five, beginning in zone one and moving northward. Increase potential flow paths for the water, we'll be doing this in-house with our mechanical dredging. To spread the flow through the wetland. And then plan for intermittent large-scale hydraulic projects. And that really means that this is not a one-stop, one-shot solution. And the sediment's gonna come in, we are looking at. The sediment's going to come in. We are looking at utilizing bonding to pay for this first project. But we need, what we need to realize is that we cannot finance our way out of a sediment issue. So moving forwards, we have to figure out how to raise funds internally through charitable giving. Just kind of get the funds ourselves to do these projects and do them on intermittent scale. I don't know what that is yet. We'll have to do studies moving forward to look at the sedimentation rates to see how much the delta is forming. It could be every five years, every eight years, every ten years. A lot of that is going to depend on how long it takes us to raise the funding. With the bonding process, we will not be able to bond again, potentially for the same type of project due to some laws on serial bonding. We could potentially look at it, but there is a referendum process, and it's unlikely that it would be approved again for dredging type projects. So we really need to look at how we can raise money internally to to deal with this issue on an ongoing basis. Implementation. The coronavirus had actually provided a very good time for us to get some work done on this project without really having to focus on getting the lake ready for the year. And so we have got a ton done this year as far as permitting, working with consultants and finance. It's really been been pretty amazing. So for permitting, anytime you do stuff in water, it's pretty permitting intensive. And that's because Department of Natural Resources, Department Environmental Management, Army Corps of Engineers, their main goal is really the protection of water and land. And water being, you know, a pretty crucial resource. So anytime that you're affecting and impacting water, there's going to be a lot of permitting. The permits that we have had to apply for, and now these are all completed. Excuse me, they have all been submitted, and they're actually up for public review right now. Some people in the eastern portion of the lake, close to where the dredging disposal sites will be, have received letters telling about the project. And the permitting, it looks like Pam's holding hers up right there. And I will go ahead and send out that letter to the rest of the freeholders via constant contact, so you can just see the language that was that was involved and kind of the information there. So as far as the permitting, the most local level permitting was with the Brown County Soil and Water Conservation District. This is what's called a Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan. And anytime you're looking at doing construction or disturbing greater than a one acre area, you have to have a Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, which essentially shows the area that you're impacting and what measures you're going to take. So land that isn't vegetated, the sediment's not sloughing off nutrients, that type of thing. So silt fencing, construction entrances, stone barriers, all of that. Next is the Department of Environmental Management. That Stormwater Pollution Plan really goes right into the Rule Five Permit. And the Rule Five Permit is the actual permit for land disturbance. So anytime you disturb over an acre of land, you're required to get a Rule Five Permit. We have two Rule Five Permits currently and Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plans, and that is for our two disposal sites on the North Shore on Stiller Road and on Awesome Shop. The next Department of Environmental Management Permit is what's called an Individual Section 401. This is for the discharge of dredge material to isolated wetlands. So this was essentially the permit that would allow us to put the dredge material if we needed to into the pond and other other areas. And not just the dredge material, the discharge material into a pond, if we were to utilize the the pond, which I don't think we'll need to during this round. This four one permit would allow us to put in riprap and stone if we wanted to create a barrier to section off that pond to keep some open water, keep some planted. It's the same permit for putting materials into an isolated wetland, whether that be sediment or whether that be the construction of a barrier to maintain open water and create another capture basin there. So I just want to clarify that. That's not just for slugs. That would be for any materials that we needed. Next, we have the Department of Natural Resources, and this is a permit for construction in a floodway. And that is because the lake itself is a floodway, and then also the northern portion of the property on South Shore Drive near Little Africa gets into the floodway a little bit. However, since we're not doing big constructions, buildings, we have been discussing DNR, and this should not be an issue to put the pond there since it's a low hazard. Next, we have Army Corps of Engineers, and this is what's called a Nationwide Permit. And the permit is for aquatic habitat restoration enhancement and establishment activities. And that's really what lets us maintain the reservoir and do the hydraulic dredging. So there's a Lake Restoration Act, which really ties into this Nationwide Permit and allows us to do the dredging in the lake to maintain it for water capacity. So all the permitting has been completed. It's all in the hands of the regulatory agencies, and it's currently going through the process now for approval and public input and everything that's needed. So construction and dredging. Construction and dredging. There's two disposal sites that we were looking at, and I'll get into that right now. And here in a little bit, we'll talk about the funding mechanisms that we have available. For the bonding, the two funding mechanisms were what's called the State Revolving Fund for wastewater projects and open market bonding. And these are both bonding solutions. So with the State Revolving Fund, since it would have been a wastewater project, what they really wanted to see was how we were enhancing the water quality through this project, the straight dredging for recreation. They don't view as a water quality enhancement. So they really wanted to see us utilize the overflow pond as a primary site and then plant it afterwards as a treatment wetland for the uptake of nutrients to create wildlife habitat, just to show a net input from the project as far as water quality and habitat goes. We have since learned that the State Revolving Fund will not fund the project at this time. We did not make the cut for this year. So we will be utilizing open market. We don't have to use the overflow pond now for this project. At the time the permitting was put in, that was included because it would have been a requirement under State Revolving Fund. For now, we will start with the land-based site. And this first round of projects, I have full confidence that we'll be able to fit the yardage removed into that land-based site and that we will not utilize the pond during this time. Now, the permitting again was submitted when that was still on the docket. And, you know, in the future, if we if we can't get rid of enough sediment, we got to look at places. You know, there's always the potential that we would would utilize a portion of it. But we'd have the permit in place to where we could separate any type of sediment retention area and open water area. But I do not believe we will, we will need to use it. And ideally, as we move forward in the future, we can get rid of enough sediment from our land-based site where we can reuse that over and over like we do our North Shore sites. Especially since we need to take some time to raise funds. What we would likely see is, you know, if it takes five years to raise the funds, the goal would be to get rid of all the sediment in that area within those five years as well, so we could just go back and continue to utilize that sediment. Actually, I had a call with the DNR permit reporter about two days ago to talk about the continued reuse of that that project, just so they could write into the permits. So that that's where we're at. We we won't be needing the pond site for this. It isn't a permitting because it was there when we applied for it. So for the land-based site, these are the the initial construction documents that we have. This was from our Stormwater Management Plan, showing where our areas and of impact will be. With this pond right here, we're showing a little over eighty thousand cubic yard storage capacity. Now, this was the preliminary one, which was only based off of a ten-foot excavation. We recently had some soil testing and boring done, and the average depth of sediment in that area is actually closer to eighteen feet before we start to get to the bedrock. So we're predicting that we'll be able to fit one hundred and twenty thousand plus cubic yards easily into the site. And there's eighty thousand based on that, and then we're almost doubling capacity since we can go down another eight to ten feet in the area. So essentially, what this would show is the water line would come in from the hydraulic dredging. What that is essentially a snow blower, auger head underwater. It pumps up the the sluice, which is a sediment water. It pumps it through a line which would come up through the creek. Now, this is enclosed and would dump into the southwest portion of the bay. The way we have it designed now is the water, the sun would settle out as the water moves across. We would have a weir system, the northeastern portion, that would allow the water to flow back out into the road right away and through the ditch back to the lake. And so that would be the water that has the sediment removed out of it. There are methods, depending on how much sediment is staying in the water. There's different polymers that you can use to help the rate of sediment, what they call flocculation, or the sediment falling out of the solution. So that will be monitored because the water that has to go back into the lake will have requirements on how much sediment can remain in it. And our goal is to get the sediment into the pond, not back into the lake. The pond base site, if you were to go to normal pool and utilize the entire site, is seventy-three cubic yards. Again, we will not need this for this round of the project. It was included in our Stormwater Management Plan because of State Revolving Fund, that would have been a potential site. Then the benefit of not utilizing it this time was if we were to do one hundred and twenty thousand cubic yards, we would have had to use both sites with only seventy-three cubic yard, seventy-three thousand cubic yards fitting in the pond. We would have had to utilize the pond, plant it, and for the additional yardage to get us to one hundred and twenty thousand plus, we also would have had to develop the land-based site. So this will save money because we will only be developing one site at this time and utilizing that, which is the land-based site. Hydraulic dredging, this will be fully contracted. And the requests for bids, we're working on those. Those should be going out in August. And again, we are sticking with our original plan. We'll be starting in the southern zone, zone one, digging to a minimum depth of five feet, or probably between five and six feet to our eastern vegetation maintenance line, and then moving northward until until we are out of capacity or out of money at the storage site. Our in-house operation will be focusing on this eastern portion, and that will be kind of going on as an as needed and as possible basis. This first part has already been cleared out. We're actually in Dorothy Lane right now. Afterwards, there's a couple of other sites that we're looking at for access dredging, but as we have time moving forward, we'll be able to open up these channels in-house utilizing our current permitting and equipment. The disposal site that we'll be focusing on is the site eighteen, the land-based site. My plan is in probably September or so to pull off a dredging operation from the water and start developing that disposal site, assuming our permitting is all available. And I think we can do most of that in-house. Again, we went back to the disposal site prep. That's going to be a joint effort. I think we can get the majority of the disposal site prep in-house with our current equipment and staff. We would have to use a contractor for the final design and implementation of the weir system and maybe some final grading and such for the containment pond. So here's our cost estimate. These are all estimates. The the purchase of the articulating truck, we know that price because we have the loan we bought the truck. The creation of disposal sites and the dredging, those are estimates. The biggest takeaway, though, is that we are capping the project at one point two million dollars for the bond. So whether the hopefully the creation of the disposal sites, you know, gets reduced, we can increase yardage. Those are those are estimates. We will be capping at the one point two million dollars. And we should have more than enough with the current estimate at six cubic yards. We have over one hundred and thirty-four thousand cubic yards removed. That's even more than a hundred and twenty thousand cubic yard goal. So there's a little wiggle room in there, and we'll just have to figure that out as we as we go along. For financing, there's really two options for financing for a government aside from, you know, your own generated revenue. And those are short-term notes and long-term bonds. Short-term notes would be like a standard loan from a bank. We've utilized in the past purchased dredging equipment, and we recently utilized one to purchase our new articulated off-road truck. What you are stuck with on a short-term loan, or not stuck with, but rather you're limited to a two-year payment with a balloon at the end with the option to renew it for another two years. So you're really looking at a maximum of a four-year term with a balloon payment at the end, which I don't believe we were ready or had the financing to do for one point two million dollars to pay it back in four years. So we're looking at the bonding options, which are a maximum of twenty-year term. Now, in our bonding resolution, I believe it was either a five- or six-year call period, where after that timeframe, we could start to pay off the remaining funds if we do raise enough money. So we could cut back that term if we have additional monies that we can use for the debt repayment. On one point two million dollars, that's our assumed principle. The assumed open market interest rate is three point two percent, and all this information is from our financial advisor with Baker Tilly. Our total interest is four hundred and twenty thousand and total debt service, one point six million. And this is assuming an average of eighty-five thousand dollars per year debt service. Now, some of the discussions that I've had with the local banks, I do, I'm hopeful that we can actually get a rate in the twos, the mid to upper twos for this bond process. The State Revolving Fund was estimated to be at two point five percent. And then our local banking institution has said they believe they can match that on the bond and notes if they purchase it. So I'm hopeful that we'll be able to get below that three point two percent for the project. I'm going to go ahead and stop the share now. And before we move on to questions, I really just want to show the timeline that goes along with the financing. Let me pull up the share screen. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
All right. So we're currently on July eighteenth. We're having our meeting to adopt the bond resolution, and this is the public hearing. We actually do not have another resolution for the tentative approval of drawings. We did our preliminary approval at the last meeting. And then in this resolution, it's written in there to finalize the construction drawing. So it's just one resolution that we'll be signing today that'll take care of both of those. After our meeting, we will have to notify the newspapers of our determination to issue bonds and also have to work with the Bloomington Utilities Service Board. And that's because to take on significant debt, we do have to have their blessing. Our bond resolutions will go to them, showing that we'll be utilizing our tax base for repayment repayment, and they are not liable. So essentially, the process after this is getting the CBU to go ahead and write a resolution stating that they're fine if us taking out the bond. And we have any communication with them. I do not foresee that being an issue. In August, we'll be working on the bids for construction. Now, these are tentative dates. This is August twelfth, and just in August for the bids received, you know, I could go in early September, but in August, we will get out the bids for work with the disposal sites and the dredging. In September fourth, or September, we'll be utilizing the bids that we received and those budget estimates to have Baker Tilly, our financial advisor, do the final budget. After that, in September, we also have our notice of intent to sell bonds. That needs to be published twice in Indianapolis Paper, the Business Journal, and then our local papers. So the first time will be late September. The second time will be early October for publishing our intent to sell bonds. In October is the deadline for bidders to express interest, the actual bond sale. And we're predicted to close at the end of October. So that's when we receive our financing. We can, and we will start working on the disposal site prep prior to us having monies from the bond proceeds in-house. So we will be able to, you know, make effort and and get stuff done regarding the project even before we get the funding. So that's the the timeframe. I guess for now, I'd first would like to have the